Good evening, everyone. I call to order this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We have six members present this evening and our student representative. We do have a quorum. At this time, Kevin Bocun will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item of business is to approve this evening's agenda. Is there a motion?
There are moves.
Thank you, Mr. Stalfer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of approval of this evening's agenda, please raise your hand. Okay, we have six affirmative votes, unanimous with the student rep concurring. We'll move next to approval of the minutes.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, September 15, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the closed session of September 15, 2020? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Okay, we have six affirmative votes.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the second approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, September 15, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes of September 15, 2020? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Okay, we have six affirmative votes, so it's unanimous with the student member concur. I'm sorry.
Just a reminder that I was not here.
Okay, all right, so we have five. Okay, so we have, let's go back, we have five affirmative votes and one abstention on the closed session, five affirmative votes, one abstention on the business meeting minutes. Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Both sets of minutes stand approved. This time we'll go to public comment. Our first individual to speak this evening is Mr. Neil Becker. Good evening, Mr. Becker.
Good evening.
I think the new protocol has been shared with you. Am I correct?
It has been. Thank you.
And I would just like to remind you that as a speaker, you have up to five minutes. Mr. Bickford is our timekeeper.
He'll be fine.
And if you would, please introduce yourself and to identify whether or not you're speaking on behalf of an organization or yourself, and you know the rest about the appropriateness of topics.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Mr. Becker.
Thank you. Again, my name is Neil Becker. I am president of the Washington County Teachers Association and the parent of a Washington County student as well, and the spouse of a Washington County paraprofessional. So I've got lots of hats I could wear, and thanks for your patience. And it's been six months since I've gotten to speak at the public meeting, so this could go on a long time. I've got six months' worth of public comments saved up. But I made good notes, so I could try to stay on time. I'm confident I'm going to go over time. Good evening, President Williams, elected board members, Dr. Michael and staff. Thank you for your efforts to guide the school system during this very difficult time. As the nation continues to battle through the pandemic, I commend educators near and far for their dedication to their students. Washington County Public Schools employees have conducted themselves with dignity, respect, and professionalism, especially as WCPS has unveiled its return to learn plan. No teacher wants a student to suffer. No teacher wants a student to struggle through distance learning. Teachers pride themselves on their dedication to their students, and those employed by WCPS exemplify that dedication. They are committed to excellence in meeting the needs of their students. The various phases of the reopening plan continue to roll out, with staff and community learning that more students will be entering schools in just three days. With the rollouts of stages two, two B, and now three, questions and challenges remain, and some remain unresolved. Teaching and learning during a pandemic is stressful. The constant evolution of the WCPS plan, in a way through no fault of WCPS but due to MSDE's lack of guidance, compounds the stress, and the fairly rapid acceleration of the plan adds stress for some. Teachers truly wonder if they have room for more students in their classrooms. Teachers are juggling in-person learners, online learners, and in some cases, learners who are not online or in person, so they help create packets. Teachers are creating synchronous lessons and asynchronous lessons to keep students engaged. Self-directed planning time is hard to find. Teachers spend their limited planning time, and at the elementary school, it's split into two 30-minute segments, completing some of the following: planning units, planning lessons, uploading documents, assignments and videos, and downloading them as well, collaborating with colleagues, emailing parents, students, and colleagues, troubleshooting IT, commenting on student work, grading work, putting grades in gradebooks, completing Safe Schools trainings, and more. Also included in elementary planning time is the time required to escort students to and from their encore courses and to and from lunch. Remember, that occurs in 30-minute blocks this year. At the middle and high school levels, self-directed planning time includes a 35-minute class period in transition at the end of each clear, excuse me, beginning and end of each class period. It has creative math, so to speak, to get the contractual minimum, because teachers have to wind down classes, respond to in-person questions, sanitize the space, and ensure the students in the hallways are properly monitored. Teachers who sanitize their rooms but don't have sinks in their classrooms then have to travel to a hallway bathroom to wash their hands before the next activity. And yes, teachers are spraying and wiping workstations, because we don't have enough custodians to handle daytime sanitizing in addition to all their other duties. Using the restroom, of course, as some of you retired school employees know, must occur in that limited planning time window also, because we can't leave students unattended. While there is time following the student day, that is not self-directed planning time. Teachers attend a variety of meetings, such as SST, CFIP, SIT, staff meetings, team meetings, department meetings, collaborative planning, school-based PD, just-in-time PD, and more. Added to the pandemic stressors is the announcement that teacher evaluations in the WCPS evaluation tool will, for the most part, be business as usual. In the past, the Danielson model, the framework for teaching, has been the WCPS evaluation tool, and it continues today. Teachers spend hours uploading artifacts and ensuring that the artifacts connect to the framework and the Common Core standards. When the teacher and administrator meet in a pre-observation conference to discuss the uploads and the lessons and goals, that's time-consuming. And in some cases, an administrator states a specific date for that visit and that evaluation. Others announce a two-week window for a visit, another stressor. Administrator visits a class for an extended time, and then administrators spend hours documenting and uploading information prior to the post-observation conference. That's the normal evaluation process, and it will be in place now, and we're in a far-from-normal classroom, in a far-from-normal environment. In light of the fact that teachers are juggling in-person and distance learning simultaneously, now known as concurrent learning or the concurrent classroom, teachers are expected, you know, they expected, excuse me, a modification of the evaluation process. WCPS has modified one aspect of the Danielson tool, Section 2E, organizing physical space.
That's time.
Due to the pandemic, the evaluator won't penalize teachers for Section 2E. So, did you say that's time? Okay. Well, I'll skip some, so we can wind down. And I will get to, I did not forget that what may be the most important reason to speak today, safety. Student and staff safety must remain priority number one for WCPS and our entire community. Educators, that includes food service, administrators, custodians, clerical, drivers, maintenance, and teachers, are doing their jobs, educating our community's most precious resources in the midst of a pandemic.
Becker, would you please bring it to a close?
I will bring it to a close. I will skip the part about Montgomery County and WCPS, and I will skip the part about some of the volunteering that other school systems.
Mr. Becker, thank you for your remarks.
And the last thing I'll close with, then, is I have an opportunity for you. Our funding agents don't realize this. The county commissioners don't respect education.
Mrs. Williams, the speaker is out of order.
I invite you to spend one day in the classroom, not just a few minutes, spend a day, experience what teachers are experiencing, and you turn off the mic, and as they get their feet on the ground, let's continue to support them. They're strong, but they can't take much more. And on the note on the evaluation process, this is from a WCPS PowerPoint regarding the evaluation. The process can be tailored to serve teachers and administrators better.
Thank you, Mr. Becker.
We haven't tailored it much.
Next individual to make public comment is Mr. Dan Ward. Good evening, Mr. Ward.
Good evening. Madam President.
The protocol has been shared with you.
Yes.
And I'd like to remind you that each speaker this evening has up to five minutes. Mr. Bickford is our timekeeper. We'd like for you to introduce yourself, please, and to let us know whether you're speaking as an individual or on behalf of an organization. If you have any comments that you'd like to share with us that are written, you may certainly do that. And you may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools except personnel or student matters that clearly identify an individual or individuals.
And I'll give you, and I'll give you, this is about 30 seconds left in time, and then this is to stop.
Madam President, we're the board members, and I believe Mr. Superintendent. My name is Daniel Ward. I am a three-year resident in Boonesboro. I have three, I have eight grandchildren. Three of them are moving across the mountain into Boonesboro soon and will hopefully be attending the Boonesboro School. What brings me here tonight was the troubling comments made in social media.
Could you speak into the microphone so that the community can hear you?
Yes. What brings me here tonight was the troubling comments on social media made by one of the board members. It was inappropriate. It was hate speech, and I don't think in the school system or any business, because if you are representing a retail food business like I am, and I'm a member, and I have a social media page, and I put something out there, I would lose my job. It was hurtful. It really aggravated. I'm speaking on behalf of the community, because I put out there that I thought it would be wonderful if the board would allow somebody to come out and say something about it. As I understand, the situation is probably going to be resolved. I would like to thank the board for opening the door to be here this evening, to be heard, for everyone that was upset by that comment. We have, we have a lot of problems right now in this country, and we don't need to throw gasoline on the fire. And basically, that's along the way. Whether you like them or not, I was 11 years old when President Kennedy was assassinated. His brother, Robert, I remember that like yesterday, the great Martin Luther King, and boy, would I love to talk to him today. And then Ronald Reagan, who lived. I've seen what happens when leaders get taken out like that, and to have an adult who represents the school system make a comment like that is highly objectionable. And I am hoping that the situation can be resolved soon and that the healing process can begin, and we can get past this. As a new resident of Washington County, I am very impressed with the services, and I came from Montgomery County, and there's so much more to offer in Washington County than where I was back home. Everyone that visits me loves it out here. So I want to thank all of you. I think, am I red or yellow?
You're fine. You've got another two minutes.
Okay. I try to keep it quick, but I feel bad for, I feel bad for the person who made the comment, because there was 18 years of service. And to do and blow 18 years of community service is kind of gut-wrenching when your heart's in it, but you have to stand responsible for your actions. And she has to be held accountable for it, because you can't allow a precedent for something like that to happen and become the normal. So with that, unless you have any questions for me, I'm going to yield my time. I thank you very, very much. I am the first person in my family that's ever been able to speak to a Board of Education. So I'll put that on my wall. God bless all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ward. All right, we have no other speakers this evening for public comment. At this time, is there any board member response to comments made by the public? We'll move on to new business, because we have no old business to conduct this evening. Under consideration this evening, our first item of new business, Board of Education member Jacqueline Fisher has submitted her resignation to the Board of Education. So entertain a motion for acceptance of Mrs. Fisher's resignation from the board.
Madam President, I move to accept the resignation of Board of Education member Jacqueline Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Ridenhour.
Yes, I would like to say a few things. I've served with Jackie all the years that she was a member of the Board of Education. I've known her since I was a child. She made a mistake, monumental. I used the term, please excuse me, it was a serious brain fart, no other, nothing else other than that. But I think, I want people to understand that Jackie provided 16 years of service. She was totally committed to providing quality education for our students, and her efforts were monumental. As all of us know, she's served on the Policy Committee, I think, every year that she was on the board. And those of us that have spent one or two years in the Policy Committee understand that that is a tedious task. She was a budget advocate. She pushed and wrote letters to the county commissioners year after year, trying to advocate for them to give us our fair share of funding. What she said was inappropriate. She's made the decision to resign. I think she did that more for us than anything else, because she believed that her mistake, you know, was a poor, what's the word I want to use, you know, reflection on the board. As we're all aware, because we all have the same email, you know, when that happened, when that issue occurred, we all got a plethora of emails. I can't, I'm not going to speak for her and say why this happened, but I will say that I am almost certain that it was just a frustration on her part. And I'm not going to speak to why she was frustrated, but I can think of about 210,000 reasons she might have been. Some of the emails that we saw were fine, you know, they were simple, to the point, she should resign, which she has done. Others were nasty, and those bother me, too. I always think about the passage in John, Book of John 8.7, it says, "He is who, he who is without sin among us, let him cast the first stone." I remember 10 years ago that a delegate commented that the only way to deal with the local delegate, the only way to deal with the HIV issue was to tattoo people who had it. I don't think we got that many emails, or I saw that many emails for that. So I do want to say to my friend, Jackie, I'm sorry what happened. I know you're sorry. I'm not going to forget the 16 years of service that you provided to this institution, and I wish you the best. And I hope people back off and let her live the rest of her life without fear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Then we'll move to the vote. The motion is to accept the resignation of Board of Education member Jacqueline Fisher. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We have six affirmative votes. Motion carries. Pardon?
Member of the board to the nominating, oh, no, I'm sorry.
I had comments, and they're not here now. Thank you. I have a prepared statement regarding Mrs. Fisher's resignation. The Washington County Board of Education acknowledges and accepts Mrs. Fisher's resignation from this elected body. Mrs. Fisher's recent comments on social media are simply unacceptable. These statements do not reflect the views, opinions, or feelings of our collective board. Furthermore, they do not uphold the values we share as a community, nor do they promote principles that we want to instill in our students. We stand for and represent a school system that is diverse and inclusive of various beliefs and standpoints. We believe in upholding conversation and dialogue that unites our community despite our individual differences. I assure the Washington County community, this board remains committed to the well-being of each and every student. This board is dedicated to working in partnership with the students, staff, administrators, and citizens of Washington County to promote positive character, to build trust, and in doing so, help all to develop a deeper understanding and respect for one another. Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Our next item under new business is the selection of an individual who will serve on the Washington County School Board Nominating Commission. This commission will be formed to fill the vacancy. This time, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move to approve the selection of Mike Gessford to serve on the Washington County School Board Nominating Commission.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second to Mrs. Murray's motion? Thank you, Mr. Stalfer. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, the motion is to approve the selection of Michael Gessford to serve on the Washington County School Board Nominating Commission. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Right, we're unanimous with the student member concurring, six affirmative votes. Thank you, Mrs. Bickford, Mrs. Stalfer. Thank you, colleagues. Our next item of consideration is tonight's consent agenda with Mr. Scott Bakel, supervisor of Purchasing Presenting.
Good evening, President Williams, excuse me, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have nine items for review. The Purchasing Review Committee has reviewed these items, and they are being recommended for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bakel. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve the awards, renewals, and unit price contract for concrete installation and repair to Advantage Landscapes and Construction Incorporated, Chuck Harrell Home Construction Incorporated, and Huntsberry Brothers Incorporated at the unit prices listed. Unit price contract for asphalt installation and repair to Huntsberry Brothers Incorporated at unit prices listed. Digital book and magazine subscriptions to Scholastic at a cost of $117,586.10. Unit price contract for asbestos abatement renewal to Asbestos Specialists Incorporated, Baxter Group Incorporated, and Retro Environmental Incorporated at the unit prices listed. Student and teacher headphones with microphone to CDWG at a cost of $277,350. Up to 1,800 Apple MacBook laptops to Apple Incorporated at a cost of up to $1,258,200. And 400 Apple TVs to Apple Incorporated at a cost of $59,600. Televisions and connecting adapters to CDWG at a cost of $255,912. 500 huddle cameras to B&amp;H Photo and Electronics Corporation at a cost of $119,000. And educational technology management systems subscription renewal to LEARN Incorporated at a cost of $120,523.47.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second to Mrs. Murray's motion to accept the consent agenda, to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Questions or discussion? Mr. Gessford?
I just have a couple of questions.
I just have a couple of questions, just for the public. I think maybe an explanation of the televisions. I think people are going to say, why are we buying so many televisions? Maybe we could explain the reason for that as one, my first question.
Sure. As we've been observing teachers in their instructional space, you almost observe a little cockpit type area, have their laptop, if they have a desktop, if they have an iPad. And what we're observing is the need for almost at least three devices. Many of our teachers only have primarily their MacBook, and we're just seeing a lot more efficiency, particularly for something like just a simple TV, a 40-inch TV, close by the individual. Instead of looking at 25 individuals on 11-inch screen, you can look at your students on a larger screen, especially as we do concurrent learning, where I have students in the classroom as well as students at home. I can kind of quickly glance at this larger screen. Instead of seeing a one-by-one picture, I'm seeing a three-by-four, you know, larger picture, especially as we get a smaller number of students at home. So that's the purpose for that. They're relatively cheap TVs and intended to be used almost like a monitor to help with their distance learning.
I didn't even just want people to think we're sitting around watching television all the time.
No, they won't really be connected in that fashion at all.
Right, it's a learning tool, and I appreciate that. The second question, I noticed that we have 500 huddle cameras. Could you explain what those are for and what they will be doing for the classroom?
Again, huddle cameras, I might have to call Mr. Willow to be my expert here, but we used to, we have used a device called a Swivel Cam. It actually is an iPad, it sits on a camera and follows the voice of the person. That's a much more expensive unit. This is a huddle cam. It basically, maybe help me out, Dr. Willow, you know, it's our camera for the classroom again as we move into concurrent learning. We're seeing that as an opportunity. We did get a number of those, to trial, run them and see how they work. We got a lot of feedback from the teachers that they were very helpful in supporting the teacher. All of our goals on some of these purchases have been to try to support teachers in making this whole process as easy as possible and as effective as possible. So, Dr. Willow, help me out a little more.
The huddle, the huddle camera has a widescreen lens and a built-in microphone. So it can sit on the teacher's desk, it can sit on top of the laptop. It allows you, for the students that are watching from home, to get a wider view of the board, of what's happening in the classroom, along with hearing the teacher. So it acts as an additional camera and can be used in a lot of different ways to enhance the concurrent experience of having both students in the classroom and online.
And so we're, tonight, in this consent agenda, we're purchasing 500 additional ones.
500 additional ones in addition to an emergency purchase order that we put through. There's a fairly long lead time on some of these items, so we're trying to go ahead and prepare, particularly when we get to stage four, where we'll have A-Day and B-Day students. We want to be able to have that continuity of learning, so we see the need to get these in order as quickly as possible.
Great. And the final question, the digital book, would you explain to us what the digital book, since it's kind of, I mean, a pretty expensive project, but did we have them last year and we used them, or were they just something, it was a new product?
Are you referring to the LEARN?
It just says, "The digital book and magazine subscriptions from Scholastic."
So that's Scholastic magazines. Scholastic is something that we have used, so it allows us, instead of what you might remember as the Scholastic hard copy of the magazine, it's all digital, which means all of our students can access all of their resources, and we use that predominantly at the elementary and middle school level. So now, with students that are not in our classroom environment, we can push this out right through the iPad or Chromebook, and students can have access to those from any location.
So that's really to support the digital part
Correct.
Of the A and B Day, that we'll have, be able to do that
Yes.
From, in the classroom and at home.
And it's something we've always, always used since we moved into the e-platform, so yes.
Exactly, I knew that wasn't something new, I just didn't, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Buchum?
Dr. Michael or Dr. Willow, do you have any idea how the 400 TVs and also the huddle cameras are going to be distributed within schools or within the school system?
So, we've asked for the televisions, we asked principals to provide us with numbers because we know that in some of our classes already, there are TVs that are capable of projecting, there are projectors that are capable of projecting. So we'll use TVs for those teachers that currently do not have one, and again, to enhance that concurrent classroom experience. The Apple TVs, we actually see big more at the elementary level, especially as our secondary schools transition from an iPad to a Chromebook.
Thank you.
I have just one question. One of the funding sources listed, and this would be for the Apple MacBooks, is the ESAR grant? Could you explain what that acronym is? What is the ESAR grant?
I don't have it on the tip of my tongue either.
Okay, all right.
It's the grant we're receiving from the federal government to help support us. It's almost like the CARES grant, the ESAR grant, the tutorial grant, all these things are all different types of federal money that's coming through to support us with this and so on.
So this is a result of the COVID?
It is, it's part of the CARES funding.
Okay.
It came out of the first CARES Act, and we're all stumbling on the acronym. I'm hearing Education Relief Fund behind me.
That wasn't a test question, it was just, it was not something I was familiar with. We've talked about the tutoring grant, so I did know what that was, but I was not at all familiar with the ESAR grant. And those Apple MacBooks are to be used in conjunction with the Apple TVs?
They're actually our replacement for the, so, a number of years ago, we bought MacBooks for all the teachers, and we're starting to age out on those at this point, so we're working to use those. The Apple TV is not a TV, it actually is a device that helps you connect to the screen.
It's what's allowing us to project right now, and so any Apple device, iPads, MacBooks, even through Chromebooks, you can still connect, so.
So which, which teachers are getting the MacBooks? My understanding is that all secondary teachers are getting laptops, correct?
Chromebooks.
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 And all elementary teachers are getting iPads, so who will these MacBooks go to?
These will go to replacing, all of our teachers currently have a MacBook, so we give two devices.
So they'll have two devices.
We give two devices to our teachers. At the elementary level, that'll be a MacBook and an iPad. At the secondary level, it'll be a Chromebook and a MacBook. And the reason for that is it replicates what the student already has, so that the teacher has the same device that the student has in the classroom.
Thank you, Dr. Willow, for clarifying that for me. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Then the motion is for approval of this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor? Okay, Mr. Bickford, are you in favor of that? Oh, no, I'm sorry. We have five affirmative, five affirmatives with the student member concurring with the affirmatives, and is
One abstention.
One abstention. So the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bakel. Next, we have, under consideration, an emergency procurement for the board's ratification. Mr. Bakel, again?
Sure, this motion is to request ratification, request for emergency procurement of 400 huddle cameras.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to ratify the emergency procurement of 400 huddle cameras to B&amp;H Photo and Electronics Corporation at a cost of $95,200.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second? Second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any discussion regarding the huddle camera emergency procurement? None? Okay, we'll move to the votes. All those in favor? This time we have six affirmative votes with the student member concurring. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bakel, very much.
Thank you.
Next item under consideration is the comprehensive maintenance plan for FY 2022 with Chief Operating Officer Jeff Prue and Mr. Michael Stauffer, who's Director of Facilities Maintenance and Operation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mrs. Williams, board members, Dr. Michael. It's my pleasure to be here tonight with Mr. Stauffer, and for some of you, you met Mr. Stauffer, I think, at the last facilities committee meeting, but this is the first time he'll be presenting to each of you, so we're trying to keep him busy this evening with a couple of presentations. But tonight in front of you is the comprehensive maintenance plan. I'll remind you that this is the third leg of the trilogy, which is the Educational Facilities Master Plan, and the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, and the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. This is actually the first leg that then starts off the year and then dictates the next two as we move forward over about a 15-month cycle. Not a lot of changes to this year's plan from previously. I think, in discussion, Mr. Stauffer and I have some ideas, maybe have some things to tweak as we move to the CMP, as we move into '21, but I think I'd like to take a moment to let Mr. Stauffer tell you a little bit about what's in this year's rendition.
Good evening, everyone. Get me, I'm not used to speaking in the speaker. So in Chapter 1, we have a basic introduction, introducing the operations and maintenance portion of the buildings, and then it flows into a description of all of our properties and gives you some specifics of what's included in those properties. So, like Boonsboro Elementary, the water supply is Town of Boonsboro, and fire protection is Johnson Controls, Simplex, Grenell. So there's a lot of good information in that first section for anyone that needs to see what's existing at a school. Chapter 2, we start out with our organizational structure for the maintenance and operations. As Jeff said, I am now the Director of Maintenance and Operations. We have maintenance managers, Mark Stevens, that oversees the maintenance in the buildings. We have operations managers, which oversee the custodians for our schools. And we also have, Mark Mills is a project manager currently. Mark does some special projects, he's really good at what he does, he knows, has a lot of good information, and he's been very helpful to me. So there's some, just in the next few pages, just some descriptions of what the facilities, people, positions are and what they do. If you notice, like, under Energy Management Analyst, we absorbed that position into one of the operations manager positions, and the same way with the Environmental Safety Specialist. So they were combined with our manager positions, and they are doing very well with that. It's a pretty sizable load for them. So as far as program highlights, I'm working towards total productive maintenance for our business. It's getting the operations side and the maintenance side to work more as a team. Right now, we kind of have certain things that the custodial people do, and if they get stuck, they give the maintenance people a call, put in a work order, and a lot of times it's small things that could be done locally at the schools, but some of the custodial people just need some training. So we can get that training to the people, they can be more self-sufficient and help everyone. Our team's pretty lean on the maintenance side, so this will help everybody, the buildings will stay in better shape, and our maintenance people will be able to handle the larger items such as HVAC repairs, which is our number-one hitter. So it's, we're trying to get it to the point that we can be better at what we're doing. Program highlights, we've done a lot of sidewalk replacements in six different schools, did a lot of parking lot resurfacing and seal coating and line painting, flooring, we did stormwater project at Eastern Elementary, rehabilitated the barn to Clear Spring. It looks really nice now. We replaced gas lines for chemistry lab at Smithburg High School, and completed a lot of painting projects. So we're trying to keep the buildings updated as much as we can, but the infrastructure is aging, so we have to keep on top of that. So in Chapter 3, it's just an inventory evaluation. So we, as a department, along with Rob Rollins' department, does an evaluation of the inventory. So we have a set of guidelines that we rate each portion of the school, like the roofs, the, they show the buildings, the sidewalks, the parking lots, and we come up with a rating. So as, towards the end of Chapter 3, there is an assessment sheet that has all the items scored out, and if, I think, did everyone see the results from the state inspections from last year? If you look at it, they closely align with what we scored. So it's, it's a good thing to know that what we're seeing, the state's also seeing, so we have a good plan to move forward, that the state will support. Just one of the comments I had was, for the most part, adequate on the report from the state corresponds to an average or slightly below average on our scores. So it gives you some type of idea of where we stand with the state. I do need to tell you that they're coming up with a new evaluation system starting this month. So we're going to start going through 17 of our schools in October, and by the end of the year, we'll have 17 new evaluations. It's an all-new rating system, it is, it's similar to the old system, but it's a lot more detailed. So the state has moved forward with trying to get more detail, more information, so we can share among the different areas and help each other out. So one of the big things that they're really pushing for is the use of SchoolDude, which is our maintenance performance system, and it's, it's a very powerful system. Right now, we're not using it as effectively as we should be, so we need to address that moving forward. So we're on a good track. Like I said, we start our new assessments at the end of this month. And if you look at Chapter 4, it kind of gives you an idea of what the work orders have been over the past year. As you see HVAC, oh, I'm sorry, it's Chapter 4, it's page 134, it's a bar graph, the highest amount of work orders we've had is in HVAC, almost 3,000. So we do have a little opportunity with HVAC to get things much better. One way we're going to work on that is, I had two openings to fill from people leaving. One was for HVAC, one was for plumber. We made them both HVAC, because there's twice as many work orders in HVAC as there are plumbing. So our plumbers are keeping up fairly well. We need to clean up the system a little bit to take, to show some of those numbers are a little high, but we need that help in HVAC. We've had some employees out for a little bit in the HVAC side, so it kind of left us to stay behind a little bit. So we're moving on with that, we're trying to get that a lot better and getting it to where we need to be. School vandalism, on page 138, see the number of incidents at Antietam Academy are our highest, and it's at a value of $4,000. So some of the items that were done there, a student hit the alerta's box and broke it. So that was a $1,000 fix. So it's small things like that, add up very quickly. And have some more examples if anyone would like to have those then. In Chapter 5, it's our deferred maintenance. This is the maintenance that we have pushed back, either by, because we don't have the funds to complete it correctly, or we just don't have the staff to get it done in a timely manner. But we're working on that, so I love to be efficient. So in the categories, or, sorry, back on page 142 is the priority tallies. As you can see, the priority ones, which could be mission debilitating if something happens, we have almost $10,000 worth of repairs that need to be done. So some of those items are, fire alarms need to be upgraded, our plumbing's getting a little shoddy in some of the buildings, and our HVAC, of course. Our HVAC's our biggest issue, most costly.
I think I heard you say 10,000, I think you meant 10 million.
10 million, sorry.
I wish it was only 10,000, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
And it looks like it's an elementary only, maybe? Correct.
So that first page is elementary. Page 143 shows the middle school on the top chart and the high schools on the bottom chart. The total, we're at almost $70 million for deferred maintenance. So some of these deferred maintenance items will move on to the Facilities Improvement Plan, headed up by Mr. Rollins. So it's So it's, some of these items were just delaying because Rob already has plans to upgrade them in the next year or two. So we just keep them running until they can be replaced. So that's some of the deferred maintenance.
And I think with that, board members, we're happy to take any questions I think you have on the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. And just a reminder that your approval this, tonight, gives staff the approval to send the document on to the state.
Is there a motion?
Mrs. Williams, I move to approve the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for fiscal year 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Guestford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any questions? Discussion? Questions? Okay, then, voting on approval of the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for FY 2022. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we have six affirmative votes, so the motion carries with the unanimous vote. Student member concurs. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Our next item under new business is the First Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding By and Between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Nora Roberts Foundation. Mr. Prue, our Chief Operating Officer, and Mr. John Martorano, our Chief Legal Counsel, presenting.
Good evening, Mrs. Williams. I think I'll take this one. I think Mr. Martorano may take the next one. This is the addendum to the agreement for the public-private partnership to address the Boonsboro High School auditorium. Back probably in the winter months, I want to say in January, we received bids for this project. They were considerably higher than the budget that was presented and available at the time. Staff have had multiple conversations with the representatives of the Nora Roberts Foundation discussing the scope of the project and the available funding for the project. As such, the donor has decided to add more money to the project to see it move forward in the designed condition. Staff has revised the, or added the addendum to the memorandum for your permission and your approval this evening, and the donor is ready to sign and has provided his approval to the document as well. The architect has already begun to do some work to dust off the plans that were advertised for bid over the last school year, with all hopes that the project can come back for your approval in December and break ground in the month of January 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Is there a motion?
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the First Amendment to Memorandum of Understanding By and Between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Nora Roberts Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Guestford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any questions or any discussion?
I would just like to thank the Nora Roberts Foundation for being willing to work with us and as well as the community of Boonsboro. I know this continues to be a process as we improve the high school, but it's extremely generous project and gift, and so I just wanted to pass on my thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Guestford. Anyone else? Then we'll move to the vote. The motion is to approve the First Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding By and Between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Nora Roberts Foundation. All those in favor? Okay, we have six affirmative votes. Student member concurs, motion carries. Okay. Next, our next item under consideration is the Amendment to the Hagerstown Revitalization Project Capital Projects Bond Bill Subrecipient Agreement for Fiscal Year 2018. Mr. Martorano.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Michael. As you mentioned, this is an amendment to the subrecipient agreement that was approved by this board in January 16th of 2018. In total, the Board of Education was to receive 2.5 million in bond proceeds from the series of bond bills that were procured by our local delegation to be used towards the downtown project. During the course of the project, the Board of Education was awarded state funding from the IAC to fund a significant portion of the project. The purpose of this amendment just before you this evening is to set forth a future bond bill funding allocation in a broader and more flexible way for fiscal years 2020, 2021, and 2022. The revised subrecipient agreement allows bond bill funding not utilized by the Board of Education to be directed to other components of the UIP with the goal of maximizing the amount of funding for the overall project. It is the intention of the grant partners, which includes the board, the Board of County Commissioners, the Maryland Theater, the City of Hagerstown, and the University System of Maryland, to utilize their remaining bond funds to fund the construction of the plaza to be located behind the school and the theater, tying the projects together and creating and inviting outdoor space in the city's core. Staff recommends approval of this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Martorano. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move for the approval of the amendment to Hagerstown Revitalization Project Capital Projects Bond Bill Subrecipient Agreement Fiscal Year 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second? Second. And Mrs. Murray, questions, discussion? Then we'll move to the vote. Motion is to approve the amendment to the Hagerstown Revitalization Capital Project Bond Bill Subrecipient Agreement Fiscal Year 2018. All those in favor? Okay, we have six affirmative votes with the student member concurring, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have the superintendent's report. Dr. Michael.
Okay, thank you, President Williams, board members. Tonight, we're pleased to have several presentations. Our first presentation will be to recognize about a dozen of our outstanding foreign language educators. I think we're even going to recognize one of our presenters as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Willow and Ms. Paula Moore.
Good evening. Founded in 2018, the Global Seal of Bili literacy is an international credential that certifies language proficiency in two or more languages to anyone, anywhere in the world. On behalf of Dr. Michael, Dr. Willow and I are honored to celebrate five French teachers, one Japanese teacher, and six Spanish WCPS teachers who scored exceptionally on the stamp assessment in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Their scores qualified them to earn the Global Seal of Bili literacy for working fluency, which means their language skills exceed the MSD World Language Teacher Certification standards. We are so proud of our teachers for earning this prestigious professional language accomplishment.
Ellie Allen, Williamsport High School. Christine Davidson, Boonsboro High School. Rachel Daley, Williamsport High School. Courtney Greening, Boonsboro High School. Katie Gross, North Hagerstown High School. I'll catch up. Renee Kaufman, Boonsboro High School. Jenny May, Hancock Middle High School. Paula Moore, Center for Education Services. Steve Schwalder, Clear Spring High School. Caroline Schlegel, Smithburg High School. Beth Ann Schaefer, South Hagerstown High School. Aubrey Swisher, Boonsboro High School. And again, congratulations to all of our recipients. I want to thank all of our teachers, and I also want to take a second to thank Paula Moore, who continues to be a leader as our supervisor of world and classical languages and EL students. We are very fortunate to have such a great, talented staff working for us in Washington County, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, our educators, absolutely. And I'd like to add my thanks to Dr. Willow's comments, particularly about Paula and the, not only the foreign language teachers, but also our EL team that Paula supervises as well. We continue to shine in the state, and that's much to do with Paula's leadership. She's a driver, and she's very, very passionate about helping children learn a foreign language as well as helping her children with their EL and English skills. So thank you, Paula.
Thank you. I'm smiling, everybody, by the way.
Paula's always smiling, and what they have learned about our foreign language teachers, they love to celebrate. They'll celebrate anything, so it's great.
Congratulations, Paula, and thank you for all you do, and thank you to all the other recipients, and congratulations to them on their award.
Okay, we'll move on with our next report. We always do a summer school report, and tonight we have Dr. Palmer, Dr. Willow, and Ms. Pumphrey with us, and they're going to give us a brief update on our summer school achievements.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. We're excited to share with you some updates in terms of summer. It seems a long time ago that summer happened, right? As you know, we always, as a county, support summer reading programs throughout the summer. This summer, obviously, our efforts had to shift to be much more in the digital fashion. So in the virtual world, you'll see on the slide some data in terms of what we collected of our students' participation. So the rail card is the program that we have with the Washington County Free Library, and so that's the number of students that use the library card this summer and checked out items from our Washington County Public Library. The Flipster Digital Magazine is a resource that is available that students can access on the county device. It's basically digital magazines of all different kinds, so you'll see some downloads and also views. The difference there would likely be that the downloads would be on the iPad and the views would be on Chromebooks. And this summer, two schools of students had Chromebooks, so it was less. The Capstone eBooks are the library media books that we have, that our students can access as electronic books on their devices and other devices. And you'll notice over 2,000 books were accessed this summer. The iParent Portal is the resource that we have on our website that has various resources, and we provided summer learning activities and things that students could do with their families, and a fun way to continue reading and learning. And you'll see the visits on there as well. And then the last two data points are the distance learning website. We had, the first one was the website that we ran from March 13th through August, so that was when we were in crisis mode, and we put together a website to support students and families. And you'll see the, over 2,000 visits and also many training videos that were accessed. You'll notice a much larger number, and that is the new distance learning website, Family Portal, that we provide to our families for various supports. That includes tech resources, content resources, the hotline information, and that data is really from August 1st through mid-September. We had over 40,000 visits to that page. So our families are accessing our digital tools to support their families and to support learning.
In an effort to close the achievement gap, which occurred as a result of COVID-19 and our school closure, each of our elementary schools provided a targeted small group individual or individualized instruction through distance learning. This was up to 28 days in order to fill the gaps created in the spring and to increase student readiness to start school in August. Student learning goals were created strategically based upon reading and/or math and individualized to best meet the needs of students. We also had our traditional elementary summer school, and with this program, it provided 16 days of distance learning instruction for our elementary students. Our county goal focused on literacy, math, with the hope of, again, closing the gap for, due to COVID-19 and our summer learning loss, while increasing student readiness for the 2020, 2021 school year. Each school was able to develop their program goals to meet the needs of the students attending summer school.
For middle school, our middle school program was face-to-face at E. Russell Hicks. We had 83 students attend all three grade levels. This was open to students across our county, and just like in the past, it was at a central location. We focused predominantly on English, language arts, and math, but as in the past, we also continued our enrichment activities such as art, physical education, science, and film. And that went from July 13th until August 6th. Our high school this summer was in a distance learning format. It started June 23rd and went until July 23rd. Summer school culminates with our graduation. This year, we ended up with, this year, we had distance location, or distance learning teaching locations at Technical High School, Antietam Academy, and we also allowed for our teachers to be able to work from home when appropriate. Our satellite locations, which are smaller clusters of students that focus just on the students within that building, were held at North High, South Hagerstown High School, and Williamsport High School. It's important to note, though, that all distance learning, all high school activities were distance learning for this summer. High school summer school, we ended up with 738 students enrolled at our central location, 34 students enrolled at our satellite location, and 64 students enrolled in our transition program. The transition program is a traditional program that we offer for incoming ninth graders. It's an opportunity to get adjusted to high school, and it also gives them the opportunity to earn credit. So we work on traditional skill setting, time management, organization, a focus on some English, language arts skills as well. Overall, we had 541 students earn credit this summer, and we ended up with 19 students that were able to graduate in 2020 as a result of students, as a result of participating at summer school.
Okay.
Any questions?
All right, thank you, staff. At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Prue, I think Mr. Stauffer, and Mr. Otto to come back to the table. We have our update again, kind of an annual tradition we have, is to update board members on summer projects that occurred throughout the system. Again, these could be maintenance projects, small renovations, those types of things. And Mr. Prue, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Again, as you indicated, Mr. Stauffer and Mr. Otto were here with me this evening from the Maintenance and Operations and Facilities Planning and Development Departments. We had a busy summer doing maintenance and major repairs to our facilities, as well as finalizing the construction of two other facilities. So I'm going to let these two gentlemen maybe talk more about those projects, but we did take on a few other projects we had not necessarily planned on as we had an opportunity when our buildings closed, and as soon as they closed, towards the end of May, when we found out we were closed and done for the rest of the year, we took an opportunity to get a few projects done perhaps that we had not planned on because we had time available. So with that, I think I'm going to turn to Mr. Otto first.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Good evening, Dr. Michael. President Williams was here, members of the board. As Mr. Prue mentioned, we're here tonight to brief you on some of the, some of the construction projects we went through this summer with Mr. Stauffer, Director of Maintenance and Operations, and myself. I'm Brad Otto. Within facilities planning and development, we had 12 capital projects at 10 different locations, which I'll get into on the next slide. And in the Maintenance and Operations Department, we had a plethora of projects, 15 HVAC projects, 20 painting projects, 32 asphalt or concrete projects, 18 flooring projects, and 27 just miscellaneous improvement projects involving various trades. For yet another summer, we had some security improvements. The photographs here are from Smithburg High School and Smithburg Middle School. On the left, you have some of the security fencing that went up between the main building and the ag building at Smithburg High. So we closed in the ramp and the walkway back there. And the picture on the right is from Smithburg Middle School, where we took advantage of an existing exterior door and canopy to create a secure visitor entrance. Both of these projects were managed by Leslie Winkler, my colleague. We also finished the third and final phase of replacing the roof at South Hagerstown High. You'll see the picture on the left of the barrel roof that I'm sure you're all familiar with. We decided to go with a gray roof membrane. all familiar with. We decided to go with a gray roof membrane on that as it's visible from the street. And the white roofs can be somewhat blinding when you can see them from the street or from the sidewalk level. So, thought that turned out really nicely. A picture on the right is just from one of the classroom rooms at South High as well. So, we are, we are now fully under a new roof at that facility. Tech High improvements, Mr. Chad Chriswell in our office managed this project. And it involved renovating spaces to accommodate new programs in AI, cloud computing, and applied manufacturing engineering. It was about a $1 million project. We had several portable classroom projects this summer. This one here is a new modular building at Western Heights Middle School that is wrapping up as we speak. So, this, this building has, it's, it's one building, but there are four classrooms and an internal corridor in there. We also had three existing portable classrooms that we moved to Pangborn Elementary. One additional classroom was added at M.K. Dowell Elementary. And then a portable classroom was totally rehabbed at Potomac Heights Elementary by Mr. Stauffer and his crew. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stauffer.
Thank you. As mentioned before, we did a lot of asphalt concrete projects. On the left, you see Clear Spring High School, where we repaired some of the patio that was all broken up in the, around the school. So, made it much safer for everyone. On the right is Eastern Elementary. There was a waste, or a stormwater project there that took care of a lot of overflow and mud and ice in the winter. And while we were there, kind of cleaned up the, the parking area, the driveway, seal coated it, painted on fresh lines for everyone to see. We had flooring projects. On the left is Clear Spring Middle. And it was, been using a lot of carpet squares, carpet tows. Makes it easier to make patterns. If we have a spill or a tear, we can remove one, put one down. So, we don't have to do the whole area. Just, just do the small parts. On the right Springfield Middle, went with the towel, the BCT towel. And it turned out really well. It's really nice and bright. This is an area that gets broken into classrooms. So, there's a lot of things that go back into this. So, it was, it was a very nice project for our people to do. And on the, this, on the left, it's a fire detection and control panel. It is in at Tech High. In the middle is a sprinkler system control, also at Tech High. So, the two are working together to provide the good notification of any fires and then sprinkle it if it's needed. On the right, you see North High gym floor. Did a refurbishment there. Also did one in Smithsburg. And there was a bunch of smaller, just clean sand and refinish projects. So, in all in all, there's been a lot of good upkeep to our properties.
And I think with that, that's just a sampling of a number of the projects we completed this summer. But we're happy to answer any questions you may have about the summer's work.
Certainly want to thank our custodial team that does such a great job in the summer to keep our buildings in great shape, get them back in great shape for a different return of students this year. But they've worked hard. Our trade staff has worked hard. Both sides of the facilities, the maintenance staff have worked hard to supervise the various projects. And even though we have limited resources, we continue to take pride in our buildings. And we want to provide a safe and clean atmosphere for our students. And I thank these gentlemen, and also, again, our entire trades team and our custodial team for the hard work that they do every day. If there are no other questions, okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Just a couple more things from me. It's hard to believe we've already been in school for 26 days. The school year, the first marking period is already half over, or more at this point. I just have to express my sincere thanks to our ESP staff, our teachers, our administrative staff. Very different year. We finished on a different note last year, and we're off to a different start this year. But people have worked extremely hard. We continue to evolve, not only in our teaching strategies, but obviously, the number of students that are attending. The quality of instruction, I think, continues to get improved, not by the capability of the teachers, just by the knowledge and resources and how they've adapted and the flexibility and the things that they've done to help our students be successful. We are so grateful that we have such a team that's willing to be dedicated and to continue to pursue excellence for our students. It's been great. I'm not only to see some students back, but now see our pre-K students back, my favorite classroom to visit on normal circumstances. But had the opportunity to be in three or four pre-Ks today. And it's like the first place I go when I enter an elementary. If you're ever having a bad day, visit one of our elementary schools and go see some pre-K students. We're excited. On Monday, we'll have kindergarten back. I'm sure that'll be equally exciting. I do want to thank our whole community that's, I think, worked hard to help get our pandemic under control here, even in Washington County. For the last three weeks, our metrics have been well above that of the state average. Been a lot of confusion about that, but our positivity rate and our rate for 100,000 residents has been well above the state average. At this point now, we're on our fourth day in a row, I believe, where we're below the state average. Today, we're three cases for 100,000 below the state average. And we're about four tenths below the state average in positivity rate. So, that's very, very positive news. We're back down and below where we were when we started Stage Two. So, I'm very happy that we're able to start Stage Three, starting this upcoming Monday. So, that'll actually be our third first day of the year. So, every time you have a first day, there's always an opportunity for glitches and, you know, new students to be seeing and excitement and things. So, again, we're going to have our third first day of the year on Monday. Excited about that. We'll have several thousand more students joining us, we hope. Also, with that, we're expanding our athletic program. Right now, encourage students that are interested in athletics to participate in our conditioning efforts that have been going on now for a number of weeks, I think since September 21st. But that will expand to our full sports program for fall, starting on October 12th. So, encourage students to consider that. Make sure to get their physical turned in, get the things they need up and running. And we look forward, hopefully, to a successful fall season. There'll be a lot more information coming out on athletics early next week as we announce schedules and some more information as far as spectators, some other restrictions that we'll have to abide by. Another group that I want to thank is our transportation team. They can handle 23,000 children, actually easier than it can in some ways, small numbers of children. So, we're trying to run a one-tier system, be very efficient with our transportation. Also trying to have a little later start to the day because so many things are different at home right now. And transportation's just done a tremendous job. Routing, rerouting, our bus drivers, everyone has pitched in and done an excellent job helping us out. I'm excited to announce for elementary, one of the pieces we have coming together in that puzzle for Monday, we have instructional materials available for every elementary student. So, in essence, think of the old pencil box. And you'll have pencils and markers and crayons and scissors and glue and those types of things. Each student will have all their own supplies. And we'll have those materials in the hands of staff by Monday when new students arrive. So, we think that will help with any concerns we have with, you know, the spread of additional germs and simply by sharing things. So, we hope it just helps with the normal flu and cold, cold season coming up. So, again, I can't thank staff enough, the hard work that they've done, the efforts they put into making this successful so far, the first 26 days. I would love to see the pandemic come to an end in a quick hurry, but I don't know if that's going to happen. I'd love to see us get to Stage Five as soon as possible. I don't know when that's going to happen. But again, I just appreciate staff for their hard work. We do have one more exciting announcement for this week. This Thursday, Christine Hurley, our local Teacher of the Year, is one of seven finalists. The board's already aware of this and the public. But they'll be announcing the Maryland Teacher of the Year this Thursday. We're going to have a little celebration of our own. They don't have the big gala that they traditionally have. So, we'll be at Boonsborough Middle School the evening of this Thursday. I think from like 7:00 to 8:30 or so, we're planning on being there. MPT YouTube channel will actually be covering the event. Be a virtual event. And we look forward to, let's cross our fingers, that we would have a Teacher of the Year finalist, or Teacher of the Year winner is actually what we're hoping for on Thursday. But we'll wait and see. We have been fortunate to have three winner, three finalists in a row. So, we've had three of the top seven three years in a row. And we're pleased with that. It's time for Washington County to win. And Christine Hurley is an excellent candidate. And we wish her all the luck for this Thursday. And we're going to be excited to be there and hopefully, report back with some good news. So, Mrs. Williams, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. We'll move to Personnel Action with Dr. Pew, Associate Superintendent for Administration and Leadership, presenting. Dr. Pew.
President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. As discussed earlier today in closed session, there are a number of staff changes for your consideration. At this time, I'd ask for your approval of personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Is there a motion?
No move.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor of personnel actions as presented this afternoon, please raise your hand. Okay, we have six affirmative votes. So, it's a unanimous passing of the motion. Thank you, Dr. Pew. Okay, for reports to the board, we have the presentation of the audited financial statements and the auditor's report with David Brandenburg, the Executive Director of Finance, presenting.
Good evening, President Williams and members of the board and Dr. Michael. You have before you this evening the audited financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2020. Rather than go through this voluminous report page by page, I'll just mention some of the more important pages for your reference later on. Mr. Sampson of the audit firm of Zelenkovsky and Ask Rod is here to talk about their reports on the financial statements and, and the single audit. And drafts of these statements were reviewed with the Audit Committee on September 18th in detail. And Mr. Al Martin of that committee is here and will share his perspective. Financial highlights of the year can be found on Page Four. And in addition to the table of contents, there's a diagram on Page Five that shows how the financial report is organized. It consists of several parts and basically begins with summary information and progresses to detail as you go through the document. Graphs on Page 11 reflect the sources of revenues and what comprises our expenses. Local funding was 29.4% of total revenue, a little bit higher this year due to the construction of the BISFA classrooms downtown, but was 37% a little more than a decade ago. Administration was only 2% of expenses this year, and that's pretty consistent from year to year. What can be confusing about these financial statements is that there are different kinds of statements that present different views. The first two statements on Pages 17 and 18 are government-wide and reflect overall financial status, considering both short-term and long-term information. The financial statements that follow that are more detailed with regard to individual funds and do not include long-term assets and liabilities. Then we have budget basis schedules under required supplementary information. And that's probably what the board is most aware, most familiar with. The board is aware of our budgetary basis general fund surplus of $1.2 million or four tenths of 1% of our budget on Page 68. That is a result of, you're familiar with that, as a result of approving the fourth quarter budget adjustments on September 15th. The report also includes a single audit over federal grants behind all the notes to the financial statements. And that includes the food service subsidies, and that's near the back, starting on Page 81. Summary results of the audit are on Page 92. I'd like to thank Renee Milburn and Leah Shaw of my staff for all their accounting work throughout the year and the substantial assistance given to the audit team. I'd also like to recognize the conscientious work of the payroll and accounts payable staff who provide excellent service to this organization. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Sampson to review his audit reports with you. And then Mr. Martin can add his comments. I'll also be glad to take any questions at any time.
All right. Thank you, David. First, I do want to thank David and his staff for getting us all the information in a timely fashion to complete the audit. And despite of COVID, you know, they issued the audit within the required timeframe. A couple of communications. We had no disagreements with management while preparing our, preparing the financial statements. We had no significant difficulties. Also, we obtained the required representations from management prior to the issuance of the report. And there were no material journal entries to report to the, to the board. Now, as far as to go over some brief financial highlights, on Page One is the opinion to the financial statements. We issued it on, basically, a unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. It's the, it's the highest form of assurance that we can provide. The school system adopted one GASB this year, which was the postponement of effective dates of certain authoritative guidance. This basically, was basically GASBs. They passed this to provide relief to state and local governments due to coronavirus. This allowed them to delay the implementation of standards. So, the financial statements are pretty comparable to the prior year. There are no new GASBs that we had to, that the school system had to adopt. As far as some brief financial highlights, on Page 17, which is the statement of net position, the couple of things I do want to point out, or it's basically your net position, which is what's left after you take your assets less your liabilities. If you look at your unrestricted net position for governmental activities, it's a negative 232 million. And for business-type activities, which is your food service fund, it's a negative 5.6 million. These are primarily due to your unfunded OPEB and pension liabilities. So, similar to the prior year. And if you look up under your non-current liabilities, you will see the school system had a net liability, net OPEB liability of approximately 200 million and a net pension liability of 18 and a half million. If you flip over to the next page, which is Page 18, it's a statement of activities. This lists the revenues and expenses of the school system. And as you can see, towards the bottom of the page, under your change in net position for your governmental activities, you had an increase of 30.5 million. That was your change. That was primarily due to capital assets and excess of depreciation, regularly to the Sharpsburg Elementary School. A $6 million increase in the health insurance fund and also a decrease in OPEB expense of approximately 5 million. And if you just scroll across there, you'll see the, the change for the business-type activities, the food service fund, had a $600,000 increase in net position. And I did want to point out, there's a, a million, 1.5 million transfer. That was basically a transfer from the general fund to the food service fund to fund salaries and benefits of the food service workers due to the interruption, the pandemic. The next page would be Page 19, which is your balance sheet. As David mentioned, these are the governmental funds. There's no long-term assets or long-term liabilities. I did want to point out, if you go under fund balances, you had an unassigned fund balance of $5 million at the end of the year for the general fund. And for the capital projects fund, you had a 1.3 million negative fund balance. That negative fund balance was mostly due to retainage payable. And, but the corresponding receivable wasn't recorded yet as the projects are not Go to Page 21. That is the income statement. You'll see the general fund had a 1.6 million positive increase in fund balance for the year ended June 30th, 2020. And the capital projects fund had a 1.2 million decrease, which is again, primarily due to not recording the revenue. not recording the revenue for the retainage payable in the. Go to Page 23. Is the Internal Service Fund. That's basically the self-insurance fund for the, the school. You see it on that position of 14.2 million dollars in the Internal Service Fund for health insurance. That's all I was going to go over on the financial statements. Is there any questions? Then I'll, then I'll move on to the single audit report. That's basically Page 92, as David had mentioned. It's basically a summary of our auditor's results. I'm happy to report, we had no findings over internal control over financial reporting or non-compliance material to the financial statements. We also audited two programs as major programs this year. One is the special education cluster, and the other program was the child and adult food care program. For both those programs, we had no findings over compliance or internal control over compliance. And that's all I had to discuss.
Al, do you have any comments?
Well, I just want to comment on behalf of the Audit Committee, which is a group of citizens with financial expertise that you've asked to assist staff and the auditors in working on conducting the audit. We had a pre-audit meeting with staff and the auditors in early June. Everything was laid out, I think, in a well-ordered manner. The audit went smoothly. We met with the staff and auditors. Both of these meetings were virtual meetings, but still, we got done what we needed to do. And I just want to commend both the auditor and the staff for, I think, a good audit process and to commend all of you for, in spite of the challenges of dealing with this pandemic and COVID-19, I think the board has done very well fiscally. Certainly, some of the challenges that are out there, you're aware of. The one thing I'd like to point out is if you take a look at Page 46, here's some good information that you can use as, I know one of the concerns you have is on the rate of facility replacement. And you look here, the end column at June 30th, 2020, you can see very clearly your total capital assets, including your buildings, furniture and equipment, and items that are leased, a small amount, total about close to 407 million dollars. And if you look at the very bottom, the annual depreciation of the historic cost of what these things were acquired at, not replacement costs, but historic costs, is 12.1 million dollars per year. So what that means is your facilities and things are wearing out at that rate based on the cost when they were bought. And the good news this year is if you look up at the top in the addition column there, you can see with the new facilities at the downtown center, Sharpsburg, this year you did spend 27.4 million, so that exceeded depreciation. So that's good. But the problem is, in future years, will you be able to continue at that level? And then unfortunately, if you're not, you've become further and further behind in your facilities wearing out and not keeping up with the depreciation over their estimated useful life. So this, this page can be very helpful, and your facilities people certainly have more detail, but this is a good one-page summary that shows the problem of not spending enough on capital facilities and upgrades. And sooner or later, you'll have to pay the piper there. But I just wanted to point that out. It's something in the notes that many times we can overlook, but it's an important page and something I think that you all may be interested in. Other than that, it was a good audit, and I commend everyone. It was a pleasure working on the committee, myself and the other volunteers. Found it very interesting, and unfortunately, we didn't have our get-together lunch and social gathering this year, but we were able to be effective with the virtual Zoom platform. So want to thank everyone for their efforts.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Are there any questions, colleagues, for any, for Mr. Martin? No? Thank you. And David, congratulations, and thank you to your department for an excellent, clean audit.
We're always glad when this time of the year comes and passes.
Hopefully, you can hang in there this year, too, so with all the uncertainty.
And thank you, Mr. Martin, for sharing that important page with us. Very appreciated. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, so we're up to Board Member Committee Reports. Mr. Bakum, do you have any information that you want to share regarding student government?
We've been meeting on the Zoom platform, and we've been having discussions on what we can do to encourage student government and defend our schools. And that is all I have for today.
Does any other committee have something that they would like to share? Mr. Gassford, Facilities Committee?
Yes, Facilities would like to announce that our next meeting will be October, Tuesday, October the 28th at 8:00 a.m. here at CES. Third floor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just announce that Finance Committee will be directly, directly after Facilities' meeting at 9:00 a.m.
So that's October 28th at 9:00 a.m.?
27th, right?
28th. Tuesday the 28th.
Is yours the 27th or the 28th?
I have 22 Tuesday the 27th.
Let me just double-check. Maybe I got the wrong. Who knows?
I have the 27th.
Maybe it's 27th. I apologize.
But they're back to back.
Yes, 27th.
Just keep in stand, going to both meetings.
Yours is at 9 o'clock also here at CES?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Murray?
Mrs. Williams, Curriculum and Instruction will be meeting also on Tuesday, October 27th at 4:00 p.m., and we're going to meet at Tech High where we will be touring the new programs.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay. We'll move then to miscellaneous business, and under miscellaneous business, we have future agenda items. You should have received a list of future agenda items. Coming up at our next meeting on October 20th would be the report on the ESSA, the Local Every Student Succeeds Act Consolidated Strategic Plan. And then in November, on our first meeting in November, we'll have a report on teacher recruitment, hiring, and the new teacher induction, and also the 2019, 2020 SAT and ACT data report. At our second meeting in November, the 2020, 2021 Student Enrollment and Free and Reduced Meal Eligibility Rates. Those are future agenda items. Should you have anything that you would like to see on a future agenda? Mr. Gassford, yes?
Mrs. Williams, I'd like to ask that we have a review of our website. I think a lot of folks have commented it's a little difficult to maneuver and find things, and I'd like just to see what the Communication Officer, Erin, would, would maybe recommend of any changes, if any changes were needed.
Okay. Making a notation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gassford. Anything else? Okay, then we'll move to Board Member Comments. Mr. Bakum, would you like to begin down there?
I'm very excited for us to move into Stage Three, and I hope that we can keep our COVID positivity rate down so that we can remain in that stage and even progress later on to the eventual Stage Four and even possibly Stage Five.
Thank you, Mr. Bakum. Mrs. Murray?
And I echo his sentiments exactly. I won't even repeat it. It's, it's absolutely true.
Mr. Bickford?
Same.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer? Nothing? Mr. Gassford?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. I would like to make a comment. First, I'd like to thank our Board President, Melissa Williams, for her leadership during this difficult time. While being on vacation, she accepted our calls and emails that began the process of reviewing policy and addressing the board's opinions and options. On Friday night, before a local politician decided that they would interfere with the board's work, she was contacting board members, gathering consensus on our thoughts and response. She worked with legal counsel, the superintendent, and the communications officer to make this transaction smooth and respectful to all involved, including our colleague. This process is spelled out for Washington County Board members through policy and the Maryland State COMAR regulations. This is a process that can't happen with the flip of the switch. It is a board personnel issue, and as a board, must give due process to that action. Secondly, I'd like to thank my fellow board members who remained professional and supportive to the process. On Friday night, when all of this information was breaking on social media, it was brought to my attention by emails and phone calls from friends. What I was seeing in the posting was offensive, appalling, and a blatant disrespect for the office of the President of the United States. As an elected official, we are held at a higher standard. We have to set examples and be leaders. We aren't perfect, but there are lines we cannot cross. This line was crossed on Friday when our colleague disrespected the President of the United States and the office he holds by wishing for his death. There are no words that can describe a person who holds life that low to wish the death of anyone, especially the President of the United States, no matter what your political party. Tonight, we learn from this lesson and we move forward with the work of this board. We have students to put first and to get back, get them back to school, and that is my main focus at this time. To the citizens of Washington County who sent messages to the board saying they were offended about my colleague's comment, accept my apologies for those comments and for those opinions. They are not the views of this board member. And finally, to the local politician who felt it was important to publish a letter on Facebook, and in my opinion, a political stunt, please take note that this board member and President Williams take all personnel issues seriously, and we do not look for advice on Facebook, social media, or any other politicians wishing to interfere with the work of this board. So the next time another politician wants to help, please pick up the phone and call. But first note that this board has policies that guide us, and we will continue the work
Thank you, Mr. Gassford. This evening, we've accepted the resignation of a member of this board who, over many years, has made significant contributions to the work of the Board of Education. However, Mrs. Fisher's postings about the death of the president were reprehensible, especially for an elected official, and I condemn, condemn them. We have received hundreds of emails, and we have seen even more social media posts expressing outrage about Mrs. Fisher's post. Since the sheer numbers will prevent me from replying to each one, let me try to answer some of them now. Members of the Board of Education are elected and cannot be fired. The elected Board of Education cannot remove a member, but can refer a member to the Maryland State Board of Education for removal. This is a process that can be lengthy and potentially costly. Mrs. Fisher's timely resignation made this option unnecessary. Members of the elected board can call for the resignation of a fellow board member. It is then up to the individual whether or not to resign. I made Mrs. Fisher aware of the consensus feelings of this board, which she took into consideration when making her decision. This is the second time a school board member in Washington County has exhibited poor judgment on social media, which has led to their removal. Judging by the vulgar and threatening nature of some of the emails, postings, and messages to this board, to Mrs. Fisher, and posted publicly, poor judgment on social media is not limited to elected officials, but it is a problem we can all fall prey to. Let's all work harder to bring more civility to our use of social media. Words matter, and we are all accountable for what we say and for what we write. This evening, Mrs. Fisher has been held accountable for her words. Now let's move on with our work for the children of Washington County. Anyone else? There's nothing further? Bullard. Thank you.